Evening, everyone, and welcome to today's town council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting into order, and all rise, please.
What do you wish to the flag of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Absolutely, this is our head leader. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, Lord, we are thankful for the opportunity to be here. And, Lord, we do remember the ones that may want to be here tonight and can't be for various reasons, Lord, we ask that you will comfort those individuals. We ask that you'll be with us, Council, this evening, as they review the issues revolving around the town of Tassau. Give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are pleasing in your eyes. We ask that all this in your name we pray.
May we please be seated. So, moving right on to the agenda, special presentation request we have done scheduled for today, no new businesses to recognize, hopefully we'll have more with them in the near future. So, next, the approval of minutes from the public hearing and council meeting of May 12th, 2020. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Absolutely.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say so, or vote by saying aye. All opposed, vote by saying nay. Motion passes. So, next, the approval of financial statements and financial reports for May of 2020. Can I get a motion to approve the financial statements? And what do you report?
Second.
Got second, any discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye. All opposed, vote by saying nay. The motion passes. Next, the committee and conference updates. Councilmember Davis will give us an update on the planning commission committee.
The planning commission did not meet this month, so I have no update.
Okay, thank you.
Could I interject here? They are hoping to open tomorrow, or Thursday. That was the last, it was the soon meeting yesterday, so.
A little good. There'll be a lot of happy people that night. Now, we're going to move on to unfinished business. First would be the second reading and approval of the 2020, what's 2021 budget. I.
Absolutely. Again, this is for the 2020 budget, and I'll summarize this. General fund, estimated revenues for the 2020 budget are $6,419,032.95. Expenditures do equal revenues in the general fund. The water fund is estimated at $1,640,954.94. The revenues do equal expenditures in the water fund. The sewer fund is estimated at $1,456,612 even, and revenues do equal expenditures in the sewer fund. The IEDA fund has $142,206 estimated in revenues, and expenditures do equal revenues. That's it.
Can I get a motion to approve the budget for the rest of 2020 and 2021?
Some of.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
Yes. I would like to make a couple, I would like to inform Council on a couple of changes. If you'll recall, our last budget work session, there were some changes made that Council wanted to see that I was mathematically not able to calculate during the meeting. Small changes, but I do want to point those out, and one of them was the community donations. It totaled $60,000, we raised it to $70,000, a specific line item in there was economic development. I had $5,000 in economic development, and actually, gentrification around town almost equals that. So, what we did with the contingency line item is we bumped that up to 15 and just reduced the contingency line item down. Total expense, the capital expense was estimated at $321,0366. It's 314, so it was just reduced just a little bit. Vehicle and heavy equipment maintenance was $116,000, it changed to $116,000, by the way, down to $114,000. And the street department was $1.487, and it's $1.484. Again, most of these were just systematic changes, nothing was put into place. The Council didn't already approve during that last session, but again, I wasn't prepared during that meeting to give you the total.
Right. Anything additional?
In water, that was, that was general fund, in the water fund, we had $263,607 miscellaneous, it's $263,799.38. Vehicle and heavy equipment maintenance, I had estimated at $14,277.66. It was reduced to $14,035.55. Also, in the sewer fund miscellaneous expenditures was estimated at $208,305.45. I changed it to $208,497.57. Vehicle heavy equipment maintenance also changed from $13,527.66 to $13,335.55. And they were all the changes that were made. A lot of those had to do with insurance and fire damage, different causes.
So, this was pre-changes?
Yes.
Anything else? Councilmembers, any discussion? No? Okay, all in favor of approving the 2020, 2021 budget, please vote by saying aye. All opposed, please vote by saying nay. Motion carries, and the budget is now approved. Next, under unfinished business is the event discussion for Tassau County Proms, July 25th, Main Street Moments Concert, Festival and Cruzean, and August, and general operation of Aqua Park and Lincolnshire Pool.
All right, I'm gonna forego my comments, and this brewster.
Well, I'm just gonna go over the phases, the changes that they were from phase one to phase two. It's in your packet, but that kind of got cut off a little bit, so I'm gonna go over those. As far as what pertains to us, recreation and entertainment, that's one of the items on here, we're talking about the Aqua Park and Lincolnshire Pool. That one, they were closed at first, and now it's low contact indoor, now they're open, high contact closed. The problem we're having with the pool is it's limited to lax swimming, diving. You have to actually have a lane for somebody to dive in, and that person will have to get out, and they allow everyone to go in with the 50 gag room that's limited now. So, that's something that you all need to discuss. Gag rooms, it went from 10-person limit to 50. Face coverings were strongly encouraged, down the required. Childcare is, it remains open, and it's got places of worship, personal grooming, state parks, things like that. But the most that pertains to us, we're worried about the recreation in our events. So, the events in phase two can go to 50 people in a gag room, so that's what we're looking at right now. Phase one to phase two is three weeks. If we go from phase two to phase three in those same three weeks, it could be the end of June, first of July, so we may be okay, but those are items that you guys need to discuss as far as those activities coming up. Like the Tassau County Proms is gonna be the end of July, so we may be okay, but I don't know what kind of decisions that you guys want to make on that tonight, or if you want to play it week by week.
Isn't that something we, the phases changed and need to, we could do an email or a special meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, what we're doing with the pool, they're in process of filling the pool now, and you say, well, why would you do that when you don't know what the phases are? Well, I assure you, if the governor comes back in July, says you can open the pool, and our pool is not ready?
Oh, yeah, I understand.
I don't know if I could handle those phone calls, so.
All your tapirios could use the pool now, couldn't they?
Well, I think, did they cancel their season? Somebody told me they canceled their season.
Who's that?
For the swim thing?
Maybe.
They had canceled?
What we'll, what we'll do is, as soon as we get that pool, the little pool is, is at a rate of repair that's almost beyond, it's almost beyond repair structurally, but we're doing everything we can do to put it back online. It may be its last season for the little kiddie pool, we've got a liner anyway, so the big pool's not far behind, and I know we've had, we had a committee in the last four or five years was actually, actually looking at options for recreation, and it's still something we need to look at in the future, but the age of both of those pools are beyond their life expectancy. But we'll communicate with any swimming leagues that may be out there, and we will allow them to use the pool with those lane understandings if they can, if they need a place to swim. But in order to open up the doors to Lincolnshire and all the kids, we, every single bag of phone calls about the pool, their Facebook pop, pop up questions continuously about the pool, so everybody's chomping at the bit.
Not the Aqua Parks.
Aqua Park to get out, and even if you didn't have lanes swimming, and it was limited to 50, I still would have a hard time shutting the gate after 50, and telling everybody else to go home, I just don't think it's practical. So, I think Dr. Catherine's recommendation or suggestion is to play it day by day.
Kind of all we can do without a little dissection remaining, so we.
Well, they didn't read somewhere in the phase two, that basically Aqua Parks are closed, so that's, in this phase, that's not even an option.
We need phase three for that.
Yeah.
And you're still, like Robin said, you're still looking at July, from one to two, took three weeks.
Now, the Aqua Park, if we did get to phase three and they opened that back up, we could have it open a week. It's not as extensive as the pool.
You can get the stuff out there again and pack quick.
Yeah. We had pumped it up, take long, then play it open.
Now, I noticed something, well, it wouldn't matter, because right now, we would have to screen everybody coming in, and we have the capability to do that.
We can.
But I don't know what phase three, what that requirement would be in phase three.
You know, it's almost, it's almost at a point, in my opinion, to where we just take the relief off for everybody and say, like a lot of localities have, we're just not going to open the pool this year, and we're just not going to float to Aqua Park. But there's another argument with that, that there's nothing in Southwest pretending much to do, so if you get it open, do it. So, you know, everybody's got, you know, totally up to cancel how you want to proceed, but somebody had brought up Main Street Moments after the last town council meeting, and suggested, you know, maybe reevaluate, looking at that, so.
Reevaluate? We decided we'd discuss it this month.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there was some, there was a little bit of talk from some of the elected officials, it may be best to just shut it down completely, so.
Well, that, wasn't that the discussion we were gonna have this month, whether we would do that or not?
If I were to vote for this.
Ever how cancel wants to proceed.
Is that, would that begin in August, or do we, I mean, we didn't make that decision next month?
Well, with all the planning that has to go into play, that it's, it's really the problem, it needs to start now. Right, if they're gonna plan and have everything lined up to where it's gonna happen, it, it needs to start now.
I don't know how you can do it.
Yeah, you really can't now, but the way I try to look at it is, all the localities have closed everything, so these vendors who want to get out, they're gonna be wide open, their schedule's not on them, so they're not gonna have to do a lot of training and say, oh, do I want to go to this one, or is that one? Tassau's the only place having something, so yes, you know, but, and again, they might plan vacations and not be able to, but I just think we're.
They're hurting bad.
Yes, they, they need something.
Would it be practical to, we had written a letter, we gave that event to Tassau today, but I can communicate actually now with the man and see how she wants to proceed, unless her husband does already.
Well, here's, I think here she comes.
I just think, you know, being an optimist, coming out of this, anything that we're gonna build and provide in late summer into the fall, assuming everything keeps tracking the way it is, is gonna be a great benefit, not only for people's well-being, but just to give people something.
Economically, too.
Economically, it's not hurting them either, but just, you know, people are gonna want to do stuff.
Right.
And if there's a possibility we can have that, we're waiting to talk to you, so come on in.
Come on in.
We're waiting to talk.
Oh, you can go, you can go.
Right, center.
Thank goodness.
So.
Were you joking, or do I?
No.
I'm sure they'll come up.
No, you can stay. So, what we were discussing is, we know, we recognize that Tassau may have responsibility for Main Street Moments. And pretty much, you're the director for that, but how do you feel about not knowing if you can happen? I mean, would you rather see a table for 2020, or would you rather, rather wait a little while? Wait and see if it still came along?
I would personally rather wait and see.
Okay.
I am still a little hopeful that we can, we can happen, but my question is, what's the difference between the flea market? There, what, I mean, really, what's the difference between that and having Main Street Moments?
Totally agree. I think I should go with it.
But that's a lot.
There's big crowds down there.
Oh, yeah, I went on north of it.
Yeah.
Should we push it off until July here?
That's what they set up.
They're gonna have to be till July, and we're, they're all available, you can make it available. Like if Amanda says I can go as far as June 30th, then June 30th, we'll make a call.
She says she can hold it up on July 15th, as long as she knows by July 15th, then we'll make a call.
We had actually already postponed it to August 15th.
Right.
So, we were wondering how long you need to throw it together.
Yeah, I can throw it together in a couple of days, but the vendors, the vendors have to make their wares, and you know, they have to plan for it.
I'd say they probably have a pretty big inventory right now.
Right.
I think Dr. Catherine had a good point, though. Don't think we're gonna have trouble getting vendors, even if it's at the last minute, because they don't have anywhere else to go.
They already loaded, they're in.
Wonder how the attendance will be.
Huge.
That's what I'm thinking, if we have some.
I mean, I think we could go ahead and scrap bounty houses, and, you know, those types of things, but as far as like the actual vendor event, I mean.
Get bleach pools and stuff?
Yeah.
The Alstom Hall.
This will be our vendors from one end of the street to the other.
Do you have that spray thing that shoots out the mistor, and have it just shoot out inside?
Just bleach it, everybody walk there.
I also think there's an opportunity there for us to do something a little bit unique. We've been doing very successful drive-in events, and people are loving them. Why can't that kind of be the same concept? We could do it virtually, we could, you know, have them set up and do a virtual event and go, you know, on social media, and then maybe even do, the farmer's market is doing this cool drive-through farmer's market where they work. That's also an alternative.
So, she, I think I heard say two days, so.
Yes. It's recorded, too, so. So, do we want to move forward with a good motion on Dr. Catherine's recommendation of where the, where it's so fluid and things are changing on a daily basis, we kind of work all these events on a day-by-day basis, and we're all available to make votes via email or special call sessions if necessary?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all of, or any discussion? All in favor of moving forward with working this on a day-by-day basis, respond by saying aye. All opposed, vote by saying nay. Motion carries, so we'll move forward day by day. So, next is the COVID-19 express update, Monday through day.
Okay, here's a statement at the last minute, Sean, Sean has been put in charge of tracking for both federal, state, any local incentives, and also tracking expenses and revenues for the COVID issues, and just want to kind of give you a little bit of an update that he put together. He couldn't be here this evening, the EMS expenses to date are $7,051.69, overtime is a little over $350. The paid time quarantine, so we had a couple, we had a couple of officers on EMS that were actually quarantined for safety reasons, nobody was positive for the record, nobody was positive, but they were quarantined for safety reasons after tested. Their department has spent $7,665.25. We also got a grant that she's gotta justify the expenses in, and send you correct me if I'm wrong, but you'll have to pay it back if it's not spent, is that correct, for COVID issues?
The CARES Act, I can't receive it's not.
Oh, great, okay, so that's, the balance on that is $17,075.5. So, we don't have a whole lot of expense, we're not on wood when it comes to COVID. I do, I have bought four packs of mask, one of them's sitting back there if anybody needs one, but we just don't have a whole lot of expenses for them, so.
That's a good problem, that, or a good life problem, that.
Now, revenues, on the other hand, Lee Anne will go over those in a minute, worry me just a little bit, but can we talk about this?
So, any questions from Council? Okay, moving right along, the revenues affected by COVID-19, Ms. Reagan.
Okay, so in your packet, I fixed a list of general fund, water fund, sewer fund from August to May, so you give a little bit of history of how we had taken in revenue in past. The heavy hitters that we talk about quite a bit, as far as being like local taxes, sales tax, now that is tax that we get from the county sales. It's actually went up, so that was a little bit surprising to me, but that was a good thing. Mills tax, last month it went up just a little bit, this month it is back down. Transient occupancy, that is your hotel and lodging tax, it has went down. Your month of May, you see your business license, it has went down, but that is because they were due on April the 15th, so you expect your month in April to be a lot higher. Your rentals, we haven't been able to rent due to COVID, so all those have just nothing in them. So, we, we have seen a loss in May in our general fund. I've done some graphs, if you wanted to kind of see a picture line of how that had hit. Water fund went significantly down in the month of May for revenue, and also in sewer fund, but we have been, excuse me, we have been trying to work with people who may not have been working and may not have been able to pay their full bill. We've been trying to work with them and allow them to make a payment and try to keep their water services going, to show that, you know, if they will show us a good faith effort, we will show them good faith effort also. So, any questions?
So, on the shelter rentals, so we're not collecting money on them, but people are using them on a daily basis. So, under phase two, since they're outdoors, can we not implement, but have rules that it's gotta be under certain.
Yeah, now, let me clarify that, the rental of the American Legion Hall, the gymnasium and the shelters have never been closed. We've only, we have a contract that they sign that makes the party that's renting responsible for being responsible. So, but they're just damp, they're just, they're just damp. So, you can still rent the American Legion Hall, as long as you have less than 50, you maintain six foot, and you can still rent the gymnasium, as long as you can follow that, and, you know, we're not, we're not running around like Hamdallah's track, you know, behind everybody, but it's just damp.
So, if I recall correctly, when we were first going under quarantine, didn't we have something posted that, that the rental of American Legion Hall and things like that was ceasing during this time?
I don't know if we did or not, we thought we did.
I thought we did, in the very beginning. And if we have, have anything, have anything done, put out saying you can't get back around?
I don't know if it's updated or not, I can't figure, we can look at it.
I don't think we have, as of the governor's announcement last Friday.
Well, even Rotary meeting again anyway.
They started this week. Yeah, they started this week.
As long as we can get the word out to that, people can.
Yeah, so like those rentals and the shelter rentals at the park, I'm sure nobody's marked it off, that they were the.
Right.
Anybody?
No, they're getting used.
Take over, go have a picnic.
We'll check on it. Okay, thank you. So, next is the indoor sports complex discussion Monday through day.
Okay, if I could back up my ear just, just a second, if you look at meals tax in May, it's $56,000, so it is declining from the high of 66 in March, and last month was 63, but the $56,000, if you look at the graph, is still above, you know, January, February, so it's not, it's low, but it's not out, it's not out of range at all. Sales taxes obviously up, people, they're not working, they're out shopping, whatever, it is up significantly for this time of year. Trans occupancy tax is low for obvious reasons. Water and sewer, I want to talk to you just a little bit about that, and I know Lee Anne sent out an email this morning, I know she's working on that, so we, we raised the sewer rates, and they became effective in December. So, if you'll look at, if you'll look at December, it was at $22,008, well, that's PSA, I'm sorry, but if you look at the sewer rates in December, they were at 95, and we're now at 90. But that 90,000 could be, could be a reflection of what Lee Anne mentioned, plus maybe only 75 or 80% of the population, because keep in mind, the rates went up in December, but it could be a reflection of, we only have maybe 80 or 85% of revenue in, or people that pay. So, the month before was 104, which it should be, you know, it should be 100,000 or more every month. So, it's my opinion that COVID is absolutely being reflected in revenue, not just, not just the, not just with us working with individuals, but people just have not taken the time to mail, it may be accustomed to coming in the front door to pay. So, I think you have to take into consideration the percentage of the population that's paying, not just the number. So, if the percentage is low, we will still, we'll still capitalize on it, actually.
Is the front door open yet, phase two?
No, we talked about that today, actually, averaging. Actually, Abingdon opened theirs, Memorial Day, and they had an incident and they ended up, they're all quarantined. How many? Just one person. So they're waiting for the results to come back from that, but they may end up shutting the off the town all down again. So up to cancel, how you want to proceed with that. All of our windows up front are now shielded. I don't know whether Richland is open up yet or not.
I'm assuming we can open for business here and open for business over there.
Absolutely not. We can open it up anytime. I think, I think a lot of it originally, this is just my opinion, was public perception and public expecting us to do it. Not that we had a lot of cases in southwest Virginia. So also had some, yeah, also had some employees that were bitten a little bit, but. So totally up to cancel, how you want to proceed with that. You ready to open back up there, proceed forward?
Can I get a motion to open? We were asking our businesses to open up, so we can meet this budget. I think it's a good idea as well, so we open up. It's a safe manner as well.
I don't think we should open up, a lot of stores are shielded and everything. We're not bad here.
Could I get a motion to open town hall back up for normal business?
I'll make the motion.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote by saying nay. Motion carries, so will open town hall up to regular business? Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so next is the indoor sports complex discussion, manager today.
Okay, everybody needs to get excited with me on this issue. I think Chris laughed, he's like, why? Boy. You know, this sports complex thing for, for three years has been a passion, I know mine. And we're still working very diligently in the background, trying to find the latest sport club that probably. But I know when I go to a potential investor, if I go to see an investor, that investor is going to expect to walk away with something in his hands to think about. That investor is going to expect a packet of information, the demographics, feasibility study. But they should also want to say if they're not familiar with travel sports, what it can bring to the table, or what it can do, especially in southwest Virginia. So if an investor could invest their money in the town of Tassle, or go to Abingdon where the population is more, they're obviously going to go where the population is higher and the possibility of capitalizing on their investment is going to be maximized. But if I can show them and educate them on how the kids do not care where they go play ball with, and I can promise you that, it doesn't make any difference where you drive to on a Saturday, or on a Friday evening, or on a Thursday evening to play travel ball, basketball, cheerleading, I can go on and on and on with the list. The kids that are involved with this frankly don't care where they go, as long as they can go play. And that's been proven. So we did the feasibility study. The feasibility study came back very, very promising for the town of Tassle. Actually, it was recommended to build two more courts than we were projecting. Earlier this month, I sent out an update to the town council, the IDA, where I updated the feasibility study from Shemera to reflect the additional revenues per tournament. So there's a lot of entities out there, including Shemera, that, that say that 20 tournaments a year is a stretch. But I can tell you that there's facilities within a 200, or within a 300 mile radius that every weekend, with exception of Thanksgiving, some of our bigger holidays, there's tournaments going on. So I feel like we need to not lose focus. I feel like we not, we need to not lose the passion. Bristol, not as a governmental entity. About two weeks ago, I was sent an article in the, in the paper where they're looking at doing the exact same project that we do. Ironically, they're looking to put an indoor bank running track. So I was a little bit devastated over that, but after thinking about it, you know, when, when we're doing basketball, if they're smart, they'll be doing cheerleading. Or when we're doing indoor soccer, they'll be doing indoor baseball, whatever. So there's ways that we can work together, that we need to work together without smothering each other out. So I'm still very passionate about the project. I feel like that it's one of the only projects that you can do in the town of Tassle that would justify a chain hotel and looking at us. So it's just my opinion that a hotel's not going to locate in a desert. They're not going to locate somewhere where there's nothing happening at. You can move Bristol-Boulder Speedway to the town of Tassle and it's not going to justify a hotel, because it's only a week out, well, twice a year. For a week each time, they might pack that hotel. So Smith Mountain Lake's a great example of that. You can go to Smith Mountain Lake, and how many hotels do you see around Smith Mountain Lake? There's not many. How many eating establishments do you see? There is not many, and simply because it's seasonal. But sports, an indoor sports complex defies that. It's not seasonal. It's annual. It's everyday, winter, snow, rain, sun, it doesn't make any difference. It can be an absolute jewel to the community, to the businesses, not only on Main Street, but throughout the entire region. But that, now, now you've put something there to attract hotels primarily. Back of the Dragon is another, another great example, something that can do it year-round. Man, it had those motorcycles in it when it died. But that's another good example. So we're getting there, little by little. How many of you had the opportunity to look at the video that I sent out probably a year ago, that Back of the Dragon put out? So Jason, so the white Mercedes. That video was put together by the same company that finished your packet, David Springer. And I've had a number of conversations with him and I've got in the packet a number of emails. And if you, if you read that, you can see that I've challenged his quotes and I've challenged the integrity of his quotes back to me. And I feel like we've, we're on a solid playing field. So having a professional video put together in order to show investor, along with a financial, a professional put together financial packet, in order to give somebody that's a potential investor, is necessary. And, and I've got a sum, a sum of money that's unofficially allocated by foundations to this project. So it's got really good footage. I had a wonderful conversation with one of our IDA members, really excited about it. I would still love to find a sport club in the community for this project. And I know I've talked to several elected officials about that. So I'll, I'll work on it for an hour and then somebody will call me about a barking dog or a pothole, or somebody said we were working on a water line in Fincastle or something. So I, it's hard, it's hard for me to stay on one, one issue and manage, manage everything that we do. So what you've got in front of you is a quote I feel very comfortable about. I think it's a very flexible quote. And I'll just go through some of the numbers. I know each one of you probably hasn't had an opportunity to look at it. But the custom logo design for this project is estimated at a maximum of $1875,000. The video production, $2,500. But you got, you got, you got some other options in there. But to put a cost on this and do it right, I think would be doing injustice. I can add those numbers up just like the rest of them can. I've got an $80,000 budget to make this town council, IDA unanimous dream a reality. I've got $80,000 budgeted to go toward this project. And I would, I would highly encourage council favorable considerations to allow me to proceed forward, to work with this individual, and hopefully in the next couple of months, we can start a campaign to get that sports complex up and running. I'm really excited about it. And again, there's some people out there. You know, one thing I want, if you've never, if you've never been to a travel ball event or had an opportunity to take a child or go see a grandkid or whatever, a travel ball event, understandably, those individuals, those individuals question. I, I had, I had a good friend of mine the other day, she thought, I don't support that project. And I said, well, how can you not? He said, it's not enough kids in Tassle to justify it. So I appreciate that. I understand the comment. So it's up to us to educate those individuals that say it that way. It's not enough kids in Tassle to justify it. It's absolutely not. But it's not put together for just our kids in Tassle. It's here to bring kids from 250 mile plus radius out. And not just kids, but their moms and dads and all, every single weekend. So for those individuals to say that, I understand and I respect it and I appreciate it, but it's our job to educate them. Only way I can do that is put a banging, ripped up, shredded video in front of them in some paperwork so they can see it. And that's what I'm asking.
Your daughter just taught you those words, didn't she?
I just learned a shred of them last night.
And then?
Yeah.
Ripped up?
Yeah.
What is a, I love it all, what is a branded presentation template? What is that?
There's a, there's a price range in there, and what they'll do is they'll come up with a branding for that sports complex and it'll stick with it for years down the road.
When you say branded logo, my only question is if, if you get investors, I mean, you're spending millions and millions of dollars, I'm thinking they want to do their own brand?
Absolutely. But I've got to be able to show Chris Brown on there. When I go to see you, I've got to be able to show you that your name can be on there. And that's the branded logo that they're sticking throughout that gymnasium. I've got to be able to say.
Not the brand or the logo of the complex?
Not the name of the complex.
Okay.
No, 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 that'll all change, you know. I can foresee, you know, this, this gymnasium named after this individual, or, you know, because they were a big donor, I can just see it. And hopefully the private sector one day will pick that up. But again, you know, you could bring a Macy's to Tassle, you could bring a Walmart, Target to Tassle, and it will not do the interior revenue, the indoor sports complex won't do it, won't touch it. It's extremely powerful, and it's reaching for the class. But you know, you can get a ladder and touch a ceiling right there, if that's a ball field you want to play in, you know, maybe we need to reevaluate what we're doing. So, you know, the Y will be dreamed for how long, Chris?
Long before.
Long before. And a lot of hard work went into it, but it's a beautiful facility, so it's not fair.
Talking with Craig James and he was a Chris Brown there, so.
So again.
So this says like brand, it says in the beginning, it says, custom logo design, video production, and then branded presentations I can template. And, you know, I'm not saying don't spend a thousand bucks on a logo, because if it makes somebody buy it, but I just feel like the investors are going to name it and brand it. If we have, if it costs us something to show them, a plausible name, it makes them more attractive, I don't think they know that. I'm just, I guess we meet with this guy, surely he understands that.
And I'll echo, I'll echo that, absolutely. Any questions?
Motion to approve. Can I get a second? Much to the pervert outside of the, careful with previous studios. So we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, on the, how much of the taxpayers are being planned on this starting out?
Well, so I've got $80,000 budgeted this year. If I could have found $200,000 a day, but I would have budgeted, but I've got $80,000 budgeted and I think I could sell, stay well within that in one fiscal year. Hopefully the facility, and I know you've got the same desire, can come with a lot of donated money.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm all for this issue, but I'm just worried about the taxpayers in this town, with the C-19 going on and, and they're down and out. I, you know, I'm looking at that part too.
Sure.
I like to say that I'm looking at that part too, and I think all towns and people are looking at that part. But if we don't find a way to bring more taxpayers in, then those people that are struggling with our rates now, that's going to happen again in five years, because as population goes down and your overhead goes up, you got one choice, raise taxes. And I hate that choice.
I do too. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, what I'd rather have an investor come to me and say they'd like to do it in town, absolutely. And that door, if any of y'all, if nobody wants to do it, come on, I'd rather not.
I really, you know, I'd like to see kids have something to go to, even adults can go to, if they can go to. But, you know, with their population in this town, but, you know, I don't know.
This isn't really for, this isn't for, this thing looks like the Back of the Dragon, where, yeah, we can utilize it and it's a great thing for us, and I've already been there once, and I think it's a great building, but it's really for people to come to our town from out of town. So it draws in out-of-town taxpayers. And our kids will be in those tournaments too, so I'm not saying it's not for our kids, but nobody in their right mind would build that thing just for, it would be a huge loss.
Well, this is basically the, the marketing to go out and try to get those investors to sell it and say, look, this is what you can do. We have a space, we have a great opportunity here, take it.
I don't know anybody, I do know one, I'm not going to say who it is, but I know one person, and I've talked to a bunch, but said it's not, well, maybe two, I might be lying, maybe it's two people. But it's simply because they don't understand. It's simply, and shame on me, I guess for that, but it's simply because they haven't seen it. They don't know what it will do for the community, they don't understand it.
We had hundreds of people in that position when we were trying to build the Y.
Yeah, I mean, you've got people out there that don't want to, they don't, the water's wet and they complain about it. I can't.
But I think it's more just a difference. They didn't see it. Most of those people now would probably say, I'm glad you did it.
Can we bring this to another month and go again?
No, I, this is just for, we have to get a, get this video together to be able to start.
We have a motion and a second, no, and discussions, so.
Right.
We're not running out and building a complex on taxpayers' money right now. We're building something to show investors to try to get, definitely give us their money.
I'm sorry.
No.
We're not building the wrong way. I'm going the wrong way.
You're getting way, way ahead of.
I don't think any heads and dogs would do it.
No. I wish it were that simple.
But is there anything you can do with that building out there? One of the bills, it's terrible.
Yeah, I'm going to turn them all down.
I'll have just a few times.
No, I'm being serious, if, hey, I'm with you. They absolutely, they need to come down. I'd like to see a sports complex here right there. Because they don't come down though.
I call for a vote. Okay, so all in favor, allow top to move forward. Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, vote by saying nay. Motion passes, top continues to move forward with Springer Studios. Item of the EMS contract, manager today.
Okay, let's look forward to this law. There's nothing, and I'm going to let Brad, I know Brad has extensively been through this with Chase and Eric. But I will tell you, without reading this line for line, which I don't recommend is necessary, but we will be receiving $100,000 annually from Tassle County. County with payments of $25,000 a quarter. At the end of that, at the end of the year, they will evaluate our loss or gain. Any losses that are a reflection of the county will be paid to the town of Tassau at 50%, up to an additional $100,000.
Are they looking at review on this yearly or is it every?
Well, this is regardless of the results at the end of the year, this will be done automatically next year. Now, the results at the end of the contract term will be a reflection of the upcoming year. But no, next year, we'll do the exact same thing. It's not a manual upgrade, if that's what you're asking. So they're going to do that for two consecutive years.
Plus the two-year policy.
But in the third, going into the third year, they will evaluate. So I can almost be well in the future that that $100,000 in the third year, if Cindy keeps operating the way she is right now, probably not going to be able to take it. You might get it, but it's not going to be all. Any of you want to add to that?
This is the only thing, Chase, I'm going to go back through these, what the county actually adopted. They added an additional paragraph in their talk and very about. And it basically goes back to the rescue squad to actively and efficiently pursue collection efforts with regard to being its building. And that's one thing they did add that wasn't in the initial draft that he and I were working on. I just, when I read that after they adopted it, it was something that they did, making some addition to the contract. But otherwise, everything we discussed subsequent what Todd's put forward is what you all understand to be.
Well, we do that anyway.
Yeah. Oh, I need a motion.
So can I get a motion to approve the new EMS contract with the town, or the county of town?
Send it.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, vote by saying nay. Motion carries. So we will adopt the new contract with the, with Todd's county. Now we're going to move on to new business, approved resolution for enhanced hazard duty benefits. May I have a vote?
Skip it and let's come back to it.
Okay, so we'll move on to number B, approved resolution for annual renewal of the cafeteria plan.
Okay, and every year, we have the option to tax health upfront or in the back. In order to save the employee, the cafeteria plan recognizes that we're taxing upfront so it can save the employee some funds. So Brad, you want to read that? Review and read.
Resolution, the town of Tassau council members for the adoption of the town of Tassau cafeteria plan. All the state, the town of Tassau council members debrief to discuss the implementation of the town of Tassau flexible benefits plan to be effective July 1, 2020. Let me know that the following resolutions were adopted by the town of Tassau council members and since resolutions have not been modified or assumed as of the date in early. Whereas, that the former cafeteria plan is authorized under section 125 of the internal revenue code 1986. Presented to this meeting is hereby adopted and approved and the proper officers of the employer are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to the plan administrator one or more copies of the plan. And whereas, that the plan year shall be for a period beginning on July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. And whereas, that the employer shall contribute to the plan amount sufficient to meet its obligation under the cafeteria plan. In accordance with the terms of the plan document, shall notify the plan administrator to which periods and contributions shall be applied. And whereas, that the proper officers of the employer shall act as soon as possible to notify employees of the adoption of the cafeteria plan by delivering to each employee a copy of the summary plan description presented to this meeting, which form is hereby approved. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael, have put some behalf, the town council certified that the cafeteria tools exhibit A and B respectively are true copies of the plan document. Summary plan description for the town of Tassau's flexible benefits plan approved and adopted in the foregoing resolutions. Being further resolved, the mayor certifies the test that the above resolution is made consent of the full town council, each of whom are in attendance along this date. Be adopted this night, day of June 2020.
Can I get a motion to approve the resolution for annual renewal of cafeteria plan?
Make a motion to approve.
You got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote by saying nay. So the resolution is approved for the annual renewal of cafeteria plan. Todd, are you ready to go back to that? Okay, so approved resolution for enhanced hazard duty benefits.
Okay, if you'll recall, a majority of the cities, towns, and the Commonwealth for the police departments have a program called LEOs. LEOs gives a retirement for law enforcement officers. Richlands, Bluefield, and Tassau County at this point have LEOs. And not to go back in depth into that conversation, but this resolution recognizes the council approves to pick up LEOs. Probably going to have to create a new one. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Tassau, the employer does hereby elect to have such employees, an employer who are employed in a position as full-time law enforcement officers. The other, the other two, three positions in there are not effective. And his tenure is not restricted as to temporary or provisional appointment to become eligible effective the first day of July 2020 for VRS benefits equivalent to those provided for the state police officers of the department of the state as set forth out in 51.1138, including the retirement multiplier of 1.7% in lieu of the benefits that would otherwise be provided to such employees. And employer agrees to pay the employer cost for providing such benefits. Now therefore, the officers of employer are hereby authorized and directed in the name of the employer to carry out the provisions of this resolutions and pay to the treasurer of the Virginia from time to time such sums as are due to be paid by employers for this purpose.
Can I get a motion to approve the resolution for enhanced hazard duty benefits?
I'll make that motion.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are you going to remove firefighters and emergency medical technicians?
Yeah. Get to the mayor reservation, we'll make it before it's signed. Is that, is that because we don't have full-time firefighters or?
We don't have full-time.
No, we do have emergency medical technicians, but that has not been evaluated.
Okay.
It's all before we get this board.
Okay.
My life's just a fireman all the time down there.
So all, all in favor of passing the resolution, please vote by saying aye. All opposed, please vote by saying nay. So the resolution is passed for enhanced hazard duty benefits. Next, the coronavirus relief fund payment, manager today.
Okay, I had a conversation, multiple conversations over the last couple of weeks about all these different, actually I was outside with Regina and Laura earlier talking about the complications of trying to keep all these grant funds and stuff straight. But we're, I guess we're blessed to have the problem with grants and keeping them straight. Just want to kind of go over all three of them and if it's okay with you, Mayor, Council, I would like to forego some of my time to Regina and Laura, they're here tonight to speak on their behalf. But long story short, the DHCD, Regina started a long time ago putting together a grand opportunity through Department of Health and Community Development for opportunity to offset losses to businesses locally. And I'm going to let her elaborate on that a little bit. We also have another program that all the town managers in the county are starting to communicate with the county about. It's a coronavirus relief fund payment. That's a $3.5 million program that's given to the county and it'll be overseen by the, all the department heads in the county, such as the town manager, county administrator. So I'll be bringing more to you before, before long. The IDA and Chamber are going to work together for the DHCD and then Regina is going to do the community investment partnership. So Regina, before I keep sliding back, just go ahead and bail me out.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mr., or evening now, Mr. Mayor and council members. Appreciate this opportunity and Lori will help me to talk about these two grants. First grant I'll talk about is the community, well, it's not actually, it will be grants, but community investment partnership. Lori and I developed this partnership with Clinchvallion Community Action because they are 501(c)(3). And so any funds that are donated to the community investment partnership will run through Clinchvallion Community Action. But the Tassau County Chamber, we have put together a review committee as well as some of our board members to solicit funds and donations for our businesses. We know that there are many businesses that will not qualify for the payroll protection plan, neither do they qualify for the EIDL, or they do not want to take on a loan. They don't want to have to pay back something that they're not making any money for. So the community investment partnership, we have funds from Tassau County IDA in the amount of 5,000. We have funds from the town of Bluefield in the amount of 5,000. We've been pledged funds through Sierra Bluff Town as well of 3,500. So we are coming to you all tonight to ask you all to pledge some funds to us as well. We also have had a virtual benefit concert, and Dr. Brown, thank you very much for your generous donation. We have had many other personal donations from individuals and other businesses such as Brandy's and Appalachian Agency that have also provided funds for this because we want to help our businesses to get back on their feet. Many of the stories that Lori and I have heard, have heard over the past few weeks have been heartbreaking. And these are people that have been in business 25 and 30 years and they're single owners. They're small businesses, but they are the backbone of our community. They're the ones that are out there supporting our little league, right there supporting project graduation, the prom, even our seniors in our community. So it's our opportunity to give back to them. On our review committee, we have asked for individuals from each one of our communities. So we have Kathy Pang, who is from Bluefield, Melanie Lawrence, who will be from the IDA and also be representing the Pocahontas area. Ms. Ari Mullins has agreed to be on this review committee as well as Connie Allen. And I'm hoping that Mark Singleton from the Sierra Bluff area will be on this review committee as well. So we've put together business people, educators, and individuals that we feel like, that know our businesses and are, will be able to reach out to them. So is that as part of the community investment partnership and we hope that you all will, you know, want to be one of our partners on that. So we'll leave that with you all for tonight. Is there anything that I would like to add on that?
Also the Thompson Chartered Foundation. We were very excited that they donated $5,000. But just a little quick thing for today, they also donated $5,000 for matching funds for a gift certificate program that's actually happening right now on our Facebook page. You can purchase $100 worth of gift certificates for just $50. All of that money has to be spent at small businesses in Tassau County. We have 100 available and the last time I checked, we probably had maybe about, maybe 65 left. So I encourage everybody, if anybody wants to purchase these, it's a great deal right now. But also another way that the Thompson Chartered Foundation has partnered with us. But y'all, we do want to thank them for also contributing to the community investment partnership.
And it also gives our individuals in the community opportunity to go out and spend that $100 in small businesses. We don't want to spend in Lowe's or Walmart or any of the franchises, but we want them to spend them locally. And then the owner of the business will just contact the Chamber and we will bring them the money, you know, we hope that some of them will spend $200 or $300 there. And then we will, we reimburse the business, in other words, with this gift coupon.
So if you get one in your small business, make sure that, you know, you know that it's legit.
Yeah, it is. And they actually will have a mark on them so they cannot be duplicated. So anyway, but the other grant opportunity that Todd was talking, Mr. Davis talking about is the DHCD Small Business Recovery Assistance. And I receive all of their emails because of the agency. So I really saw this opportunity and was colluded into it by Chris Owens, one of our project managers for our Paul Smith's project. And she said, Regina, I think that you need to work with your locality on this. So when it came across, I was like, yes, I am on it. But it is a grant opportunity, at the time I didn't know whether it was for each locality to be able to apply or if it was through the county. So I had a lot of information going out to Matthew Weaver from DHCD. He had not returned my calls, but I thought, we have a grant writer of the agency. So we looked through the impact statement, everything that we needed, I reviewed it quite thoroughly, what was needed in the grant application for submission. And each locality needed to submit a little letter of interest. We did write that, Tassau, Bluefield, and Richlands all submitted a letter of interest with us. But also in the meantime, Billy Roberts had done a survey for our businesses to answer on Survey Monkey. So we were in line with have everything ready. And then Matthew Weaver, who was the administrator of this program, contacted me and said that the county needs to be the applicant. But because we had already done the groundwork with these localities, then we were right in line with what they are expecting from DHCD. So we had asked Mr. Young to see if the Tassau County Chamber, since we already had a review committee in place and already have a community investment partnership going, which is exactly what they are looking for at DHCD, because that says that the localities are trying to do something within their, for their small businesses. So we did discuss that and Todd, thank you very much for supporting the Chamber. And so the Chamber will work with the IDA and Tassau County on this. And what this will do is where we are a non-political entity, it will help with conflicts of interest with any council or council members or anybody at the county level as well as the localities. But it's an opportunity of anywhere from 500,000 to 800,000. $10,000 of the money, $10,000, $15,000, each business can get up to $15,000. $10,000 to go towards rent. And the other 5,000 is for any type of investment or recovery that they need, such as to purchase equipment for COVID-19, for sanitization. They have to have somebody to come in and clean and they have to pay for that. Or if they need to order computers or if they need to order other technological, I don't know, peripherals or things like that, printers, new printers and things. So a lot of that will, will be taken as additional $5,000 for that. So each one of our businesses, and if we can show that most of our, or at least 30% of our businesses are SWAM, small and women and minority owned businesses, we could get an additional $300,000 for our community. So we did, Matt Weaver and the DHCD knows that we're very interested in that, so we just have to submit now our letter of interest and then sign up our MOUs and then hopefully our community will be chosen for that. But I think that the groundwork that we've done in the back with the Tassau County Chamber will certainly help us to receive some consideration for that. So thank you all very much. And I'd also like to add very quickly that October 3rd may be when we all are able to, is it the 6th, the Brew Fest?
Yeah.
Don't forget the Brew Fest, the first weekend in October. That may be when we all come out of COVID, so around our cocoon. So we, we thank you all for your support for the October Brew Fest as well.
So Todd, or I would be, I see you have votes, but I don't think.
No, it's really nothing to vote, but it's a kind of update.
Okay.
I apologize.
You do have one for the community investment partnership.
You need to probably discuss it whenever.
Correct, yeah, we'll discuss that.
If there's any questions, please let us know.
Okay, thank you. Regina, before you leave, you might have said, when I snuck out a second ago, that Richland is in?
They are, they're talking tonight and they have some funding from their relief, the flood relief fund. Things are pretty contentious in Richland right now.
There probably are a lot of talk.
So anyway, I was glad to come here instead of there tonight. So, but anyway, that I spoke with Mr. Taylor today and he and I'll get together.
Have any of the localities in Tassau allocated any deficit funds yet?
Yes, Tassau has 5,000 and I don't know if we've gotten the money from, I mean, Bluefield did 5,000, they sent that last week, and Sierra Bluff.
They pledged 3,500.
3,500.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I can read Richlands.
So next on the agenda is the approved budget amendment.
Okay, any more, we, the aldermen are really panning this on doing these budget amendments for council. But I'm going to let Cindy pick this up, but she's, she's got an opportunity to, to replace some equipment, some necessary equipment. Cindy, I'll let you pick up on it.
We had some funds in our, a lot out of our grant line up that we did not use this year. We have some batteries on our power stretchers that are, some of them went out and some of them are getting ready to go out. They have like a two-year time limit on the batteries, and those need to be replaced. And I was just wanting to reallocate the funds from that grant line up to our supply line up, which is in the negative right now. That would bring us back up to zero, plus give us a little extra money to get those batteries ordered. And we'll have to take at least one of the trucks out of service as we get the batteries replaced.
You know, I apologize to council for having to bring these up. And a lot of this stuff is just simple administrative movements, but any more aldermen, they won't, they won't cancel being involved. Probably dominated by aldermen. But anyway, just need a vote to approve it. Motion approved.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, so while Cindy moved the money, it's not necessary to cover the cost of the batteries. Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, vote by saying nay. The motion carries. Cindy, do what's needed to do. So next, Mayor Dave, the Juneteenth discussion.
Okay, if you'll recall, last year, we had an individual that actually came to cancel and asked for support for Juneteenth. It was.
Biblons.
Absolutely. And I may be wrong on this, but I think it involved a road closure, maybe, maybe not. I can't.
He had requested, did we ever close the road down though?
No.
Because they decided not to march. They decided just to drive down.
Well, I've not had any formal request at all this year, but I just want to let council know that there's some, there's topics that's come through the police department and Facebook stuff. But we will have a showing of, you know, the state, county, and, and the town will be, maybe not there, but they'll see you. So we will be on site.
Yeah, we have a meeting with the people who were supposed to be organized Friday to talk over what your plans are, and we're supposed to address it and let's see what's going on.
I think Bill's been the only one that actually came, made a professional, you know, respected presentation. And I haven't had any, any requests, period, for any type of, but I know that it'll take place. It'll be on county property.
Right. And as long as, yeah, keeps aware, and meeting with the other individuals.
What is the purpose of it again? I forget. It's the celebration end of slavery.
Okay. June the 19th?
Yeah. 12 o'clock, thanks for listening.
So we're going to move on to the miscellaneous section. It doesn't seem that we have anything. So we're going to move on to miscellaneous public comment. If anyone on the phone has any comments they wish to make, please state your name and address and limit your presentation to three minutes. Okay, so seems we don't have anyone in public with any presentations to make. So council comments, is there anything additional for our members of council?
I'd like to make a comment, and I have to say, Miss Hoes, you're right. And the job you're doing, she's great, I mean, she pumped up things later on.
I'll pass that along to her.
You better do that. And well, the other thing is, you know, I had some issues about, some complaints come from the citizens in this town. And I just want to know if we can do something for them. I know you told me that driveway down the car. He kept asking about getting paid for they dug it up or something. And.
The one you called me about last week.
You're right. And the other one is that one, the sidewalk now caused from Southern State's property, where Miss Morrison fell in the winter time, and there's grass growing on the sidewalk. If anybody can work on that.
Where is it at again?
Right across from Southern State, Morrison's residence. And this is last year where she fell. And we started looking at it, and then I told her what to, I thought they would do it last year, but.
Who was we, who looked at it?
Me and Troy and.
I follow, I follow up on that.
Yeah. Troy, then the driveway, it's kind of took, probably tore it up and it keeps dropping down.
Who's driveway it began to?
Run.
That's the one you called me about, yeah, we're looking at.
If somebody can do something for that. I haven't had any more complaints yet.
Are they the only two you got?
So far, there's a bunch, Finn Castle, it's, I explained to them that Finn Castle is where we're playing the water line. It's going to be bumpy for a while, but we're getting through with it, and just give us time.
They'll be paved, hopefully for snowflakes.
They're making pretty good time, pretty good progress.
They're getting better and better at it, getting a pipeline.
We've, we're more than halfway through the project and have saved millions.
That's what I'm saying, start underneath and raise it up.
I've got the quotes, but other projects have fallen behind. So.
You think we're not going to do it?
Yeah, we're going to do it, but you take the sidewalk, and we started, we ain't been on that because of that, so.
Sidewalks are supposed to be done in summer, right, in Finn Castle?
Well, you got, you got that one and the one coming down Maplewood. So that one on Maplewood, you get grass growing up where we had cleaned out, called this waterline project. And then you got the Barnes Trail, which Don, he said he's going to start on that next week, actually driving fixed pipes. But all, you know, just that, that waterline project is.
And it's priority.
It's priority, so it's put everything.
That's, give it priority, I just don't want to see the water breaks in the winter.
I have a question there. I'm just curious about, I think we've heard anything from the movie theater.
It's been working out, man.
They've been after it.
I actually got to have a meeting with her contractor tomorrow at 1:30 on site.
Junk outside of it, see if you can pull stuff out.
Yeah, they're, they're underway, full slow. And Brad's had some legal communication with him when it comes to Dean and stuff, the council already approved. But yeah, so things are beginning to take off.
Does she have a completion date?
I've asked her, and she always tells me no.
When it's done?
I tell you, opening up around Phase 3 would be, she'd crush it.
Oh, yeah.
I know, it probably never happened.
No.
If you could open up this year, any chance, it would absolutely crush it.
She's adding a tremendous amount of square footage to that building. She's actually adding on to what she contracted us to start on. She's actually going to need some cooperation from the planning commission and the town council in order to make that a reality. She's encroaching the right away. We might have to adjust that right away just a little bit, so good problems to have.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, one more thing, is anything moving on the loud noise ordinance account about the motorcycles coming through town and stuff? I thought we worked on that a little bit, about code.
Directing needed to, thank you.
The only, I had a question about those barking dogs, that's what it was. Barking dogs.
No, we've not ever discussed it all alone.
Well, then we had a discussion about that, we're getting code on the loud noise.
You have a topic that you.
For next month.
Hey, you want to add to the.
Yes.
I can promise you one thing. It's going to get louder.
I hope it's going to get louder.
I hope so.
I hope so.
I tell my wife, that's the sound of money.
That's right. We want to hear his corrections.
So any more comments?
I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
Based on what is going on in the U.S. today, I have not heard anything, but I would like to see the police department review their procedures. Just to make sure that we don't have any unconscious bias, any type of thing like that. So I have not heard anything, it's just, it is something that is.
Proactive.
Yes. I would like us to be in front of it instead of, you know, hearing about something.
Even in position.
At the end of it, yeah.
Great, we have.
We actually have been reviewing some of the policies that are similar to what's happened in Minnesota and some other places. We actually have done that this week. And we're reviewing them, and as you speak, we've been reviewing them. So, and you know, we do have an accreditation which holds us to a standard that we had. And it's been approved by more than just us, you know, it's been out throughout the state, and it's pretty much nationwide approved too. So we, but we are looking at certain things that have happened to see if we have enough in there or if we need to do something different.
Right, yeah. Well, and I know I've listened to different things because I think that, that we all hold biases that we're not aware of. And that might be, and I know some, some different areas have unconscious bias training. And I don't know if we're big enough to do something like that.
Yeah, we, each officer has to take, you know, a biased policy, community bias training every two years. So, you know, we do that also. And then last year, we actually did it a year ahead of everybody else to have to do it. We brought in officer duties at the academy and had that class just for everybody that day. I mean, we're trying to address it.
Right.
We will, I think that's.
Well, and I think it's great that we say what we're doing and we have it out there as well.
And we have approved of what we do.
Yes.
So we are going to issue a statement to not condemn anything that's happened in the past or, you know, moves forward.
All right, anything else, council members? Okay, so this will conclude our open session of the town council meeting, and we'll be moving into executive session.